Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the township board of trustees, regular meeting agenda, October fourteenth, twenty twenty five, six P M. Mr. Campbell, let the record show all three trustees are present. Mr. Campbell, is there any correspondence from fiscal office?
There is. I have one. It's a liquor permit. It's for, it's a new permit for Wawa Midwest LLC, forty-six thirty I. Colston Stadium, Ohio, four-five-two-four-four. Union Township, and I have all the corresponding documents. It is permitted use. That concludes the correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Gentlemen, tonight we have proclamation, special presentation. We want to welcome Union Township Fire Department Brady, firefighter Brady Gregory. As we're going to be recognizing his ten years on October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Chief Clements, you have a few things to say.
Yeah, sure.
And Brady, where are you at? Yeah, come on up.
So firefighter Brady has been with us. Brady Gregory has been with us here for ten years now. Brady and I used to run the neighborhoods here in the township together. We actually grew up on the same street. So we've been, been at it for quite a long time together. So once we, once I became the chief, as you all know, we kind of updated our patch and had a new logo and a new look. And with that comes new uniforms. And if anybody's been a part of uniforms knows what a task that is. Firefighter Gregory spearheaded that and is in charge of all of our uniforms. He is consistently looking at different vendors and options of ways we can save money in utilizing different vendors and different materials. So that's what he does outside of his normal duties as a firefighter paramedic. He's been a great employee for ten years and he's got fifteen more to go, so we hope. So awesome.
Thanks, chief. Trustee Dills.
Brady, good people. Thanks for being here tonight. Ten years. Yeah, is that your, is that your family here?
Yeah, it's my wife, yes.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for giving them to us. The pretty good people. Every time, you always got a smile. You're always lo- love your job. Clearly tell that you're passionate and so appreciate you being here for ten years. Thank you. Absolutely.
Trustee Becker.
Yeah, just I want to thank you for your service and do you have any stories you want to tell us? Anything interesting, bizarre?
It's all interesting and I don't think we have any time.
All right, fair enough. Well, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Awesome. Well, Brady, we have, we have this in recognition for you tonight. Stick around a minute. We're gonna do a personnel action for the police department as well. And then we like to grab, you know, a handshake and a team photo with you, if you don't mind. We really appreciate your, your service. Love seeing you out in the neighborhood. You're always so great with all the kids. And, you know, that fosters that next generation of people that no matter where in their community that they choose to serve, it matters that they see people that are public servants that love their careers, love their community more than anything. And that inspires them to, to find where they're going to fit and where they're going to add value to the community around us. So thanks for your, your part and what you do for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Personnel actions, police department. Chief Reese, if you would, please, as we consider Jonathan Isaac Smith, Isaac Smith for the position of police officer. If you'd please introduce him. And Isaac.
Thank you, Mr. Logue. Tonight I'd like to present Jonathan Isaac Smith to the board for the position of police officer for Union Township. Mr. Smith is a current resident of Butler County and is a twenty-twenty-two graduate of Lakota West High School. Mr. Smith is also a twenty-twenty-five graduate of the Great Oaks Police Academy where he obtained his OPADA Police Officer Certification. Mr. Smith has successfully completed all pre-employment requirements for the police officer position, including a background investigation, a polygraph examination, and a psychological assessment. I am requesting that the board appoint Jonathan Isaac Smith to the position of police officer in accordance with a collective bargaining agreement pending the successful completion of a physical examination. Mr. Smith's scheduled start date is October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, chief. Trustee Dills.
Do you prefer Isaac or Jonathan?
Isaac, sir.
Isaac, okay. Isaac, you got your family here, right?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, introduce him, please, please.
On the left-hand side, I have my girlfriend Brooke, and then next to her, my father Aaron, and my mom Jennifer. And in the far back, I have my cousin Michael, who's with me, and his wife Shelby.
That's awesome. That's awesome. The, so you, you live in Butler County, right?
Yes, sir.
So just curious, out of all the police departments, what, what opened the door here for Union Township?
Yeah, at Scarlet Oaks, we've had a lot of different police departments kind of come and introduce themselves and recruit.
Yeah.
Union Township stuck out the most to me.
Why, why's that?
Very professional. Immediately when they came in, you knew what, whenever they came to talk, they had purpose and reasoning behind it. A lot of departments just came in and tried to sweeten the deal, but whenever they spoke, they kind of took everyone's attention away from the work they're doing, from thinking about lunch in ten minutes, just to kind of focus on them and hear what they had to say.
Yeah, you, you're basically already hired on, so you don't have to, you know, blow me. I love that, love it. Appreciate you choosing us. The, the, you, you're gonna notice the camaraderie. Just, it's, it's awesome here. It's awesome. And, and guys that come here, they stay here. So leadership's great. You're gonna notice that. And so we'll push you, but I think also you'll become a fine officer. So, yeah, so appreciate you being here. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Trustee Becker.
Yeah, so, yeah, wel- welcome aboard. And this is kind of a follow-up to trustee Dills' line of questioning. So, you know, was it the reputation of Chief Reese or was it the reputation of the board of trustees that brought you here? It was us, right? That's the right answer?
I would say it's definitely Chief Reese and Officer Smith in those two that he brought with him. Definitely stood out.
All right, sounds good. All right, well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Are you looking to do a ride-along with them soon? All right. Well, gentlemen, it's always great to have a new hire, especially for our police department. These guys have said it, so Isaac, look forward to welcoming you and seeing you around Union Township. Gentlemen, that, do we have a motion to hire Jonathan Isaac Smith for the position of police officer at the preparationary service rate as established in the collective bargaining agreement effective date October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, twelve oh-one A, impending successful completion of medical physical examination. Do we have that motion?
Yes, I'm moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion care.
Congratulations, son.
Congratulations. All right, we're moving on to public comments. There are public comment cards at the back corner of the room there. If anyone is interested in speaking, we just ask that you get a public comment card for us and bring it up for us. So I'll just start at the top of the pile here. Got Mel DeWitt. Would you like to welcome to the podium?
Mel DeWitt, three-nine-zero-two Banks Road, Union Township, Ohio. For a change, it's going to be a compliment rather than a complaint from me. It's going to be about the wall this weekend. It was very good to work with Elizabeth Hour on the prep for it a little bit. Had to put my two cents in here and there. It was very, very good to be able to talk with the veterans in particular as the wall was up and some of the citizens and see that they really appreciated it being here. Now, if I may break with protocol, may I ask for a couple of other people to come up here for just a moment? And that would be Corey Wright and Elizabeth Hour.
Lisa, you, you looking for Lisa?
Lisa R.
Lisa?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, okay. Yep, Lisa, Corey. Yeah, of course, please.
Okay, the practice of giving challenge coins dates back to the Roman Empire times. And I know of two people right here that put in a lot of work with the wall, and they both deserve the coins.
Thank you.
Like I said, compliments for a change.
Thanks, Mel. Thanks, Mel. I feel that I have to disagree because I feel like everything's always a compliment coming, coming from you, so I appreciate that even further. Kyla Hucker.
Hello, Kyla Hucker, thirteen-twenty Meeks Drive. I wish I had a compliment. I could probably come up with something, but I wanted to ask. I've been attending your meeting at Potavy Township and I learned there are C I C committees and Port Authority committees in the county level. And I was wondering if you guys worked together. Reason being is, when I attended a meeting previously, there was a comment here that I think one of the trustees had said they weren't interested in approving any more multifamily or storage projects. But Claremont County Port, Port Authority is looking to put out loans and tax exemptions for, I think, expanding provisional living off Buck Buxton and putting in a multifamily project by, called DC Lane Phase Two, both to be off Buck Buxton. And I was just curious if all these layers of government that I'm discovering, do you guys work together? Because I've heard you guys talk about overlays and planning and industrial places and commercial places. And rest people live in those areas and I wonder, do you guys all work together? Are these separate entities that you guys may say no more multifamily or big projects, but then the county can come in and offer the same thing that you guys aren't really looking for in the township? So I was just wondering, you don't have to answer now. I'm just curious because I've got all this new information and I don't know how to sort it all out and I don't fully understand it.
Thanks, Kyla. Well, I firmly believe that government works best when it works together and for the efficiency for the people. That's really the whole platform that I ran on when, when I got involved, much like you, just kind of digging into some things and got involved. So to answer your question a little bit more detail, I think we can have Mr. Wright speak a little bit specifically about what's going on with the Port Authority right now. And so in addition to that, and really the nuts and bolts of that, you can have that idealistic viewpoint. Government should all work together for the efficiency of the taxpayer and for the best benefit and service to the taxpayer. Jurisdictions do have different black and white types of authorities and different types of power and influence. But that's where being a representative, it can be beneficial to have open lines of communication with, with those other entities and be able to leverage and utilize that when it's possible, just to be able to use soft influence when it comes to making change on your behalf. Mr. Wright, would you like to share just a little bit about the Port Authority right now?
Sure. So the Port Authority is basically a different formation of government than the township. And so the township does operate its own C I C, Community Improvement Corporation. That is separate from the township, has a separate set of books, has a separate audit, all of that. The Port Authority is a separate entity altogether. I believe on those two projects that you referenced, those are projects that had prior approval. There was no additional approval. And what they typically offer is they will offer a, a sales tax exemption on the construction. That's typically an incentive program that the Port Authority offers, and they do that on many, many large projects. Usually it's a, it's a project of scale that, that exempts hard goods on construction, doesn't exempt labor or anything like that. It's just about the hard goods, like the, the sticks and bricks and all that that build, that build the project. So, so it's not uncommon to see a retail project or a residential project or an assisted living project or any of the sort reach out to the port to achieve that, or an industrial project for that matter, to achieve that sales tax exemption to help offset some of those costs on the project. In fact, a project that also got that and is the Hamilton Safe Project, which is an industrial project off of Round Bottom. So there's a perfect example. If you look up Hamilton Safe, you'll see that the Port Authority actually retains title to the property and it's in a leaseback position for that. That's a totally separate entity of government. That's a program that they run. They also have the ability to issue debt. We have used the Port Authority, I believe, in the past when we did some credit enhancement and things with Jungle Gyms to, to do that on, on a special assessment. So there's a number of different ways that those entities work together. But they also have their own incentives that they can offer outside of what maybe the township can offer. Because of course, we don't have a sales tax to exempt. The township does not. Whereas the county through the port can do sales tax exemptions on that. So that's really what that, what that does.
All right, that helps me understand some. But the project, I don't think those are finished. They're supposed to meet tomorrow at three o'clock. The Port Authority to finalize those.
They have to review those and, yeah, they, they review those and they'll take action on that, yeah.
All right, but they don't come with, you guys don't get together to say, we want to do this or we were wanting to do this.
We've already approved both of those projects.
Okay, so they did come through you all?
They, they came through a prior board.
Okay.
So they've been on the books for a while. They're just building them now.
All right, well, that helps. Thank you.
Lisa Britt Haupt?
Bright Haupt.
Bright Haupt.
Lisa Bright Haupt, seven-three-five-eight Hollywood Drive. That's in Westchester. I just wanted to come this evening and introduce myself. I'm the new branch manager at the Union Township Public Library as of last week, although I've worked for the Claremont County Public Library for almost thirty-two years. And I wanted to encourage all of you and everyone in this room to please come and visit us just across the highway at that big beautiful building. We have seventy thousand items that can be checked out for free. Don't go buy a new book in these economic times. Come and borrow it from the library. Save yourself thirty bucks. Come and rent movies from it. Oh, I shouldn't say rent. They're free. And I also am the notary there, so we provide free notary service for everyone at all ten branches in the Claremont County Public Library. And we have free programming for children, adults, precious seniors. Just, I wanted to encourage all of you to come and utilize our space. Also, free meeting rooms, free meeting rooms. So if you want to hold a baby shower, a wedding shower, a birthday party, you don't have to clean your house. You can come and rent a meeting room at the library, okay? So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lisa.
Chairman, if I make a comment on that topic?
Yeah, please.
So, man, I, you know, I appreciate the, you know, the library and, and I'm a steady customer, at least my wife is. And, you know, you mentioned getting movies. You know, it's, there's a lot of television series that are also available. And that's something my wife and I typically do. So we go to the library and get them for free. We're currently watching the N C I S Los Angeles versions. And, and working through that. And I think we watched the, the Washington version of N C I S up until, I guess we caught up with my current time, and then we ran out of the videos. But then we'll, we'll pick up on those too once, once they start stocking them. So we're steady customers of yours and we really appreciate the library, so thank you.
Right, thank you. We appreciate you.
That's all, Chair.
My, my, my three kids use the library quite frequently. They're seven, five, and three. And, and we, we, we sometimes have to pay our dues for the abuse that little kids will put on books to the library as well, but that's all fair. It's all fair. It's, it's worth it. So they really enjoy the services there and the space you provide. And it's been a great place for my wife and her Bible study to me again. So you really do provide, I'd say, a really nice foundation in the community. Last month, we had someone up here speaking about mental health services in the community. And I believe it's the type of proactive preventative type of services that your library is able to offer. Because America, you know, really founded on a, a, a strong, creative, thinking, inquisitive mindset, founded on the Bible, my, my, my faith there. And you guys, I, I really believe that you address a lot of the ecosystem type of needs in the community right now. So thanks for what you do. All right, thank you, Lisa. We have another public comment? Yep, please come on up. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Brenda Vega. I live at sixty-nine-thirty, six-nine-three-one Golden Gate Drive. I am the swan lady. Have been for the past seven years. Well, it's going on eight now. First of all, I want to tell you guys that all the citizens and patrons I've talked to at the park, at veterans, they are so thrilled with all the changes. And they wanted me to thank you all for that, especially the swings around the pond. They're just, and they're, they're, they're in love. I even took advantage of that at lunch today and, and sat there as well after I fed them. This is Mr., I know you're overwhelmed, Mr. Taylor, but I was wondering if there's any way, if we're going to have a lot of more people coming to spend time there, if we could somehow drag that pond, even if we need to use the long boat like we did to rescue the one that's Miss, previous Stan Deanling. And we rescued the one with the hook between his, his neck, yeah. I've, that's an ongoing issue because there's so many lures and, you know, items in there that are, and if people are going to be coming to see the swans, we even discussed that, that people do come just to enjoy them. That they, we need to clean that pond. I'll get out there and help. I'm a volunteer. I don't get paid. I do this because I love it. I love this place. I love the township. I love the people and I adore the swans. And so I started this many years ago, being their overseer. So if that's any way we could do that, I mean, I'm, I'm on board for free. Just give me a pair, a pair of waders, because I'm not going back in that pond again in riding boots, please. It's really gross. But today I also noticed that maybe the people are still fishing there often too. And there's nothing to catch there except for a mess and break off another line, you know, and that's all they do. And I'd, I get kind of irritated, but I just keep my mouth shut and just go about my business. But, you know, you've got that fully stocked pond at Clepper Park and nobody hardly uses it. But the ones where the swans are should be, you know, no fishing, no swimming, you know. That's just common sense, like the cemetery and T Q L. Speaking of T Q L, when I went by there today, the two females that we thought were a mated male and female pair turned out to be, I call them a Vernon Shirley now. They were over across the boulevard and were grazing in the I Institute's front lawn. So I had to stop and corral them in the hissy-fissy and the attack mode and all that stuff. We know a big deal. So I got them back to the pond, down the hill, you know, out of safety or out of danger into safety, back into the pond where they belong. So maybe we should put up like this, you know, be a swan crossing sign or something. Because the way people drive through there, it's like incredibly crazy. But that's all I wanted to say, but especially thanks for all the upgrades on that pond, on the Veterans Park. It's beautiful. It's absolutely incredible what you guys did. I mean, the grant, I mean, it's well deserved. And if we could allocate just a little bit of time, if you cats, I mean, anybody who wants to organize a crew, I mean, I'm in, I'm on it. I mean, I'm ready to work, you know, and I do it for free because of my love, you know. And that's just the kind of person I am. So now I'll leave that matter to you. Let me know if you guys can do anything. A couple of your guys, I think Adam was willing. I don't know about anybody else, but, you know, that's just something that's dear to my heart. You know, those birds, I've been raising them since they were juvenile, so, and they know me and they're well trained. So, okay, guys?
Awesome. Thank, thank you. Trustee Dills.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Brenda, thank you for doing what you do and volunteering so much. And I didn't know, you said all the changes. Does that include the new playground as well you're talking about?
Oh, absolutely.
So you spend a lot of time there at Veterans Park.
Yes, I do. I've seen a lot.
So you get kind of a gauge of the temperature. Would you say that most of the kids and the parents and all that, they love that?
They adore it. They really do. I think everybody is just, they're just, their minds are blown.
Minds are blown.
Yeah, they have not. See, there's not a playground like that around anywhere. And, and I mean, even Anderson Township, they don't, nobody has a facility like that. There is everything there that they could ever want.
No one has a facility like that. And so I'm actually indirectly talking to Mr. Becker through you right now.
Yeah.
So we, we, we pick on each other. We like that a little bit fun. So.
Okay.
Yeah, me and, me and Mr. Logue were like, this is, this is a grand slam, you know.
Oh, it is. It's a home run all the way.
You know, and our administrator did a good job and, and I thought it was very much needed, so I'm glad to hear that.
Oh, it's, it's amazing. At first I thought.
Get some feedback every now and then.
At first I thought it was a splash shot. I was like, wait a minute, guys, that's going to make a horrible mess. And who's going to maintain the gross water? But it's beautiful.
Awesome, cool. Love hearing that.
People seem to be respectful of it too so far, you know.
Yeah.
You know, it might cause a little more for the police department to, you know, patrol that area, especially as nightfall. And, you know, there's a lot of people, unfortunately, for the homeless people. And a lot of people hang out up there and use the facilities for other things, so that's, might be an ongoing issue. But, you know, I see and hear everything.
I appreciate the feedback. Thank you, Ms. Brenda.
But let me know, okay? I'm ready and, ready and willing before winter. Let's get her down.
Thank you. Thank you. So minds are blown in Union Township. That's all I heard. That's, that was the expectation. Yes, ma'am.
I did not go out first. I apologize.
That's fine. That's fine. Yep. Okay, that's fine, that's fine, yep.
But we are gonna play school then here. So if you'll take, each of you take one, pass it down, so everybody knows what I'm talking about.
Okay. I, I got another comment to say on that, but yeah.
I'll wait till you get this. Um, my name is Rhonda, and I don't know that I wanna use my last name, but if you choose to ask me, I will be more than happy to. I live at thirty-six seventy-three Bristol Lake Drive. Um, hello Township trustees. My name is Rhonda, and I thank you so much for allowing me to share what I've been doing at one of your park benches at the Veterans Park that face the pond on Monday and Wednesday mornings from ten to twelve. On one of my mornings, your fine trustee, Mr. John Becker, stopped by to see what I was doing. And after talking with them, with him, he asked me if I'd come and tell you about my mission. So let me tell you about my mission. And I bring my wagon with me, 'cause this is what goes with me when I come to the park. And I know you're looking at me like, this is a crazy lady, but I set up five men, this sign. And I got this, this idea from reading this book called The Listening Bench. You can get it on Amazon.
I wish the wagon were here, but they don't.
Uh-uh.
I'm gonna write that, they might, write that down.
They do this in Europe, it's very, very popular in Europe, where people sit in benches and anybody can come and share their story with them. 'Cause as you can see on the orange piece of paper, it says, "Most of us carry things." Some of us can't even talk to a friend or family member about them, but they can certainly talk to a stranger. So I'm the stranger at the bench. And I've been doing this, well, let me finish my thing here. I read this book by Randy Judd about two years ago. And the subtitle says, "What Would You Tell A Stranger In Confidence?" And that question has stuck with me for a long time. It reminds me that many people long for a place to maybe share a piece of their story. It really touched me and I felt that maybe God was calling me to do this. So, in the meantime, I also volunteer at Hospice of Cincinnati on Five Mile. I've been doing, I do spiritual care down there, and I've been doing it for the last fifteen years. So during my time at hospice, I've learned the power of simply being present with people, of listening with compassion. Sometimes words aren't even needed, it's just offering a safe place for someone to be heard and to make a difference. After much thought and prayer, I decided to set up a sign and see what happens. I've been coming to the Veterans Park since September eighth, and I've had quite a few people come up to me and say, "What is this about?" So after I explain to them and share the orange paper that I gave you all, they sit down and they share something, they've got something to tell me. Now mind you, I'm not a therapist, I'm not a counselor. But I feel that sometimes people just need someone who will truly hear them, someone they don't know, who won't judge them or try to fix things. I'm not a fixer, I'm a listener. It's amazing how much people carry inside. Things they can't always share with family or friend. It's such a simple idea, but just listening to them, but it could bring a little more peace and kindness to them. So I give them the orange handout, and if you, if you look at the very bottom, it says, "The only thing you can, you cannot tell me is a confession of a crime."
Chief Reese will be happy to hear those.
I, um, I, that's just something, I, according to Mr. Judd in the book, they don't, they, that is part of it. So the very first person he ever met was a young lady who said, "I think I killed my mom." And he goes, "Wait a minute, what's the le- what's the only rule I have?" And she goes, "Well, I know I really didn't kill her, but I was caretaker." And she said, "I need your help in here." And she said, "Mom, just give me five minutes, I'm fixing your breakfast." She went in there with the breakfast and found her mom dead on the floor. She's never told anybody what happened. She never told anybody, that if she'd have gone in there when she asked for it, she probably would still be alive. But she was able to share this with somebody. I've not had that happen to me yet, but I might. And if that's the case, it certainly won't be a crime. Also, the yellow piece of paper that I shared with you, uh, because I am not a therapist, I'm not a counselor, I encourage them to seek professional help. And those numbers on that yellow piece of paper, hopefully they'll call and make some connections. So, after they share with me, I ask them if they feel better. Most of them have said yes. So my goal is that they walk away a little lighter than they did when they sat down with me. Do you have any questions for me?
Chair, may I?
Yeah, please.
So I, I wanna kinda tell the story of how we met. So I was in Veterans Park, I was looking in the bulletin board, I was looking for something. And I saw this eight and a half by eleven flyer that was, you know, taped to the bottom of a bulletin board. And I took a photo of it and, and I sent it to Mr. Wright, "Do you, you know anything about this?" He, he didn't know, so, nobody knew anything. So, and the schedule was, um, Monday nine to noon and Wednesday's nine to noon. Are you still with that schedule?
I'm changing it to ten to noon because I-
Ten to noon?
Yeah, I, I deliver backpack on Wednesday, I can't get there till a little bit later, so.
Okay, so I went, um, I, I don't know, was that following Monday or one, one or the other? And I, and I drove through looking for her, and I did, I, I saw her one day and she was with somebody, and then I went back around, I get, maybe I guess it was the, maybe that was on a Monday, then Wednesday, uh, she was free. So I, you know, parked the truck and went to chat with her. So, you know, I, so I, I just showed up and said, "I'm here to listen." Well, that's, you know, she's the one that's supposed to be listening. I just wanted to know, who are you, why are you here? You know, what, what's going on? I was just curious. So I thought I'd be with her about five minutes, I was with her an hour and a half. And, um, you know, frankly, the, the, you know, the look, Rhonda, the look on your face was priceless when I told you, "The biggest problem in my marriage is that I can't get my wife to spend any money." I never gained sympathy for that.
Wait a second, oh, the biggest problem in your marriage?
Yes.
She doesn't sp- so, huh?
I can't get my wife to spend any money.
You are the, I think, you might be the cheapest person I know in my life. And your wife doesn't spend any money.
So we've gotta talk with her about these incredible ideas like funding the playgrounds? We gotta go to her?
Oh, yeah, good luck with that, so, yeah, you're welcome to take, take a shot at her.
Alright, alright.
But, uh, yeah, from my experience and, 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 um, you know, nonjudgmental, doesn't press religion on anybody, it, it, she, she's really awesome to chat with and, and I, I've been happy to get to know her.
Yeah, I don't, um, I don't mention God with them unless they share it with me first. 'Cause that could be a real hurdle for them. So I, I try to just listen to what they have to say, so, anyway.
Ms. Rhonda, the, uh, thank you for doing that, what a, what a very cool thing to do. And, uh, that's neat. I'm just curious, so do you, do you ever? I mean, 'cause usually when somebody has something to say, they are looking for some kind of feedback or solution at all, do, do you provide that at all or no? Or try not to?
I, I try to reinforce what they ask me. I try to make sure what they're asking me, first of all.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that they really want feedback, I think they just want somebody here. Now, I've had somebody say, "So what would you do in this situation?" And I said, "Do you want me to tell you what I would do or what I think the right thing to do is sometimes?" So, um, I'm, I, I guess I'm just trying to be somebody who I will share if they ask me. I, I had, I, I will tell you, one, one grandmother has not seen her great-grandchild because of a conflict with her grandson. She goes, "What do you think I should do?" I said, "Well, what do you wanna do?" She goes, "I wanna see my grands- my grandbaby, and I, my great-grandbaby." And I said, "Well, I suggest you call your grandson and have a heart-to-heart with him and see what happens." And she said, "Well, I don't think he'll come." And I said, "You don't know unless you ask." You know, maybe he doesn't know how much you miss, you know, your daughter or your, you know, or great-granddaughter. And I said, you know, she goes, "Well, I'm thinking about going to court." And I said, "Well, you better get your ducks in a row then." 'Cause I don't know, I don't know how to handle something like that, that's not happening, I, you know, so.
Well, any of you, Rhonda, hey, and then John, thanks for bringing her up here.
Anybody else, any questions?
Good job. No, this is great, and it sounds like you've made use of the bulletin board, which, uh, just, it's a low light, but it's, it's something that this board, uh, looked back and forth at each other about a year and a half ago, right? Said, "Wow, there's not a bulletin board in the parks, we need to put a bulletin board out there." So Mr. Taylor, thank you for getting all that stuff done. This is exactly what we're talking about, how you bring community together. And now she's able to utilize the public space of bulletin board, which, you know, we're catching, catching things up at times.
Well, I did hang a couple of signs in the restrooms. I hung one in the ladies', and my husband was nice enough to go hang one in the men's, but they were gone, so, and that's okay, I get it.
You got a pure heart, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you, you all have a blessed day.
God bless you.
Come see me at the bench.
Hey, folks, like, it's like a sitting with an angel from heaven.
Thank you.
I'm sorry I have to leave.
That's okay.
I have my H R meeting.
You definitely need that sign there. Alright, Department reports, Fire and Emergency Medical Services Chief Austin Clemmons.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Uh, the month of September, the Fire Department responded to a hundred and eighty-nine fire and service calls, responded to five hundred and seventy-seven EMS details, made patient contact with five hundred and sixteen patients, and transported four hundred and twenty-eight of those. The Fire Department completed one thousand one hundred and forty-nine hours of training, were part of thirteen public education details, hosted ride time with EMT medic students for a total of twenty-one hours, completed two life safety inspections, and fifteen joint inspections with the Claremont County Building Department. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, Chief, Trustee Dills.
Chief, good job, appreciate you, sir.
Trustee Becker. Police Department Chief Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. The month of September, the Communications Center handled four thousand eight hundred fifty-three calls for service for police, fire, and EMS, and five thousand three hundred thirty-nine total calls. Uh, our records section issued one vendor permit for the month, handled one hundred and thirty-four public records requests, and redacted forty-eight uh, body camera videos. In the area of operations, our officers took three hundred and fifty-one incident reports, one hundred and eight crash reports, made four hundred and thirty-five traffic stops, issued a hundred and forty-three citations, three hundred and nineteen warnings, made seventy-two criminal arrests, seventy-five traffic arrests, and served eighty-five warrants. Uh, the Honor Guard in the month of September participated in the, uh, lantern lighting ceremony at Mount Mariah Park. And in the area of training, our officers attended two hundred and eighty-eight hours of total training in September. Uh, with tonight's hire, um, we are down to one opening that I'm hoping to fill next month. We have a subject and background, background right now that looks favorable. One other thing I'll just add in the area of public relations, our Citizen Police Academy, which I believe is our eighteenth CPA, is wrapping up this month. Uh, another big class, another good class, I know Mr. Dills is part of that. Um, they'll be doing their ride-alongs next week and then our graduation here at the end of the month, so, another successful class. That concludes my report.
Thanks, Chief, Trustee Dills.
Chief, I don't wanna be that guy, but it's actually the twentieth anniversary.
It's the twentieth?
Twentieth, yeah, yeah.
St. Brett.
Yeah, the, um, I was just gonna touch on that real quick, and, uh, you're, usually each, each week, it's every week for almost two and a half months, three months? And, uh, I've noticed, first off, very impressive with your detectives, um, because they'll, they'll get a case, and, and the detectives only work the hard stuff, they don't work like a crash or whatever, right? So, um, and, but they'll get a case and they'll work on it, they'll work on it, and then out of left field, another case falls in their lap, and they have to stop mentally what they're doing on this project and work on this project. Then another case comes up, then they gotta circle back to the first one. Just the brain power, uh, and how their mind works and it just not, it just, it was very, I was very impressive with, with the amount of detail as well. But one thing I noticed with all of the officers that would come in to, to train everybody, all the citizens, is they have a really good fine line of being ultra-professional, but also down-to-earth and relatable. Um, but it, but, and then also they took their job very seriously. And also you could tell, like, okay, this, this is a cop, right? So, so just there's a great fine line, I thought they did a great balance, just very, you know, approachable, anybody could approach them, but they knew their job very well, and just, uh, uh, just great, great officers, yeah. So everybody does a fine job, so, I really, I've actually, I'm thinking, three hours every week for, for, for ten weeks or, you know, three months almost, and I'm like, "Gosh, how much information can we possibly..." I was wrong, I was wrong, a lot of information, it's good stuff, so I'm glad we do it, absolutely worth it, so, you know.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Trustee Becker.
Yeah, I think I was one of the, one of the first crews, at least in the first five, six, maybe, some, some years ago going through it. And, yeah, I've always strongly recommended it, uh, for, for people to go through at the Citizen's Police Academy, so, really an awesome experience. And, you know, you get to, you know, talk to the police officers, you know, one-on-one, and, and ask questions and kinda get a better feel for kind of what they do and how they do it and how they deal with the emotions. But aside from all that, Chief Reese, I got three items for you. Uh, so, you know, I like to, to read the call-out reports, and, and typically I find one or two items to kinda talk about publicly here. Uh, throughout these, and, and I've seen these before, the, the use of drones. So you use the drones to, to find missing children, sometimes it's for, it's to view an accident scene from, you know, from, from, from a higher altitude. Uh, so ta- tell us, what do these drones look like? I mean, how big are they? And, and, you know, do they, are they armed with anything other than a camera? And, you know, how are the taxpayers getting their money's worth out of these drones?
So most of them are really, almost look like models, they're, they're not very big, I would say. You know, they, they go anywhere from this small to this big.
Okay.
Um, for the most part, we simply use them for the, for their ability to videotape and to take still photos. Um, they can zoom in from very far away, and you're right, you hit on a lot of the highlights. We typically use them, um, if we have a missing child, if we have a, a, a older person that suffers from autism, uh, that wanders away from the house. Um, they're very useful, especially at night, uh, we have one particularly that has infrared. Um, that's proved very useful for us. Uh, we shoot crime scenes, fatal accidents, uh, to help our reconstructionists. And occasionally, and, and it's very rare, we may get a situation that's a little hairy for our officers, and we may wanna send a drone up to get a look at things before we respond. But those situations are very rare. Um, the one thing I love about our unit is, is that, you know, we will call them out uh, to assist with other departments, and we have been asked to do that from time to time. So it's good to be able to provide a service not just for our residents, but for the county.
What about the thermal imaging?
So thermal, I, I can't speak too highly about that because I'm not trained to be a drone operator, but the thermal and the infrared-
It does have those capabilities, though.
Right, particularly helpful at night if we have a subject, like we've had children in the woods.
Okay.
Uh, we had an autistic kid that was lost in the woods. And, um, yeah, those are typically where those features come in handy.
Ah, great. Okay, the next item I have for you is on the call-out report, September tenth, ATM robbery at the Sheriff's Credit Union. So read a, uh, kind of a, couple of segments here. Multiple subjects were observed committing the offenses, which took place over multiple days. What, what, what happened, what can you tell us, and how'd you catch them?
Well, this is another, quite frankly, another flock camera success story. Um, this was a pretty elaborate scheme, we had a group of, uh, foreign suspects, uh, they approached the ATM in the overnight hours, downloaded some malware onto the ATM, and about three weeks later, an individual came back from the same group and tested the, the alarm to see if anybody would come. Nobody came, so at that point, with the malware being downloaded, they were able to withdraw a considerable amount of money from the ATM. Now, the flock cameras, uh, that we have in the area, we were able to identify both vehicles, the, the vehicle that, uh, with the people that downloaded the malware and the vehicle of the suspect that withdrew the money. Um, and through, through the use of the flock cameras, and obviously we got considerable help from other jurisdictions, one particularly up in northern Indiana. Uh, we've identified all three suspects, uh, for both instances, and one's actually in Claremont County Jail, the other two have warrants out for them. So, um, again, I can't tell you how invaluable these flock cameras are with helping us solve these crimes.
Yeah, I love hearing these success stories. So you said they were foreigners, illegal aliens?
Well, I, I don't know that for a fact, but I would guess that that's, there's a good possibility of that.
Alright, very interesting. Okay, last thing I have for you, um, you know, I, I do ask the public to contact me or, you know, any, really anybody they want with issues. And so it's a lady I was communicating with in the Viking Village. And, um, what I wanna read is an email that she just sent, sent me today, or, or sent to Chief Reese and copied me on it. Uh, "Dear Chief Reese, I wanted to take a moment to personally thank you and your officers for addressing-" for addressing the ongoing issues with abandoned and long-term parked vehicles in Viking Village. I truly appreciate the time and effort your department dedicated to following up on these concerns and taking action. It is clear that your team went above and beyond, not only by towing abandoned vehicles, but also by citing improperly parked cars and issuing warnings where necessary. These steps have already made a noticeable difference in improving the appearance and order of our neighborhood. Please extend my gratitude to all the officers involved. Your department's attention to this matter and continued commitment to maintaining our community, our community's safety and appearance are sincerely appreciated. Thank you again for your professionalism and responsiveness. So, you know, our police department just hits one homerun after another. So, I wanted to share that with the public. Thank you, Chief Reese.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
That's all I have, Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Becker. Thank you, Chief. Service Department, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. From September 1st through the 30th, six burials were performed, generating $3,263. One resident grave was purchased for $700, and five columbarium niches were purchased for $7,600. One cremation scattering garden was purchased, generating $600. The total amount generated for the period was $13,939. I also wanted to express my gratitude as far as the lantern lighting event was well-attended. I would also like to thank the board and the fiscal office and Mr. Wright for their continued support and presence during the event. In the Parks Division, landscape improvements were completed at the comfort zone and the splash pad, and mums were planted at the civic cemetery as well. And in the Road Department, the Road Department repaired and filled 27 potholes on heat township roads, and a total of 16 repairs were completed by the Road Department staff. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Trustee Dills.
Mr. Taylor, your team did a good job with the traveling wall. Park looked very beautiful, very presentable, 100% you and your team, because no one else, as you, as you guys, I appreciate you very much. Make sure your team knows that. Roads are fine. I, I don't think I've reported a pottle in quite some time, and no one's reported one to me. So, I used to give you a bunch, you know, but I haven't had one in, in months. So, good job, your team. Yeah, yeah, you did a great job. Appreciate you.
Appreciate it.
Trustee Becker.
I'm good.
Mr. Taylor, hey, talking about potholes, have you, has digitizing that and the request process, has that been well-received for your team? And you're just getting good metrics through it, good volume?
It is. It's actually helped us quite a bit, because anytime anyone would, you know, reach out to us, we would still put it on a work order. But now, more and more people are using the website.
That's great.
You know, to, you know, and that helps generate the work order response.
Generates it and pinpoints the, the right data that your team needs to be able to go out and fix it more efficiently. So, that's great, you know? Just keep on seeing process improvement like that. So, thank you for your team. Yeah, you guys have done phenomenal work just around the township, always in general. But you heard it tonight, again, with, with Veterans Park, minds are blown, and, you know, large undertaking that you guys have had with that. So, it's, it's, it's a really, really positive and great buzz around the township overall from what every department's able to make an impact. So, thank you. Planning and zoning, Mr. McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the month of September, we had 49 inspections for code enforcement, eight complaints, four of which were unfounded, two warning citations, five 15-day non-compliance letters, one 30-day violation letter, 26 cases resolved, 419 legal signs removed, 13 violations for the month, 28 re-inspections and then violations, and two nuisances filed. In terms of permits, we had six commercial permits, five changes of use, eight signs, one temporary sign, four single-family dwelling units, five additions, three decks, four accessory permits, 16 pool or fence permits, or 52 permits issued, revenue of $12,285. And for the fire department revenue, we took in $300 for the month. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Trustee Dills.
I have nothing. Thanks, Mark.
Trustee Becker.
I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Great work. Administration, Mr. Roy Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. And I'll be very brief. We've had a lot of comment tonight. Got the contractor back at Splash Pad. They made the repair on the one segment, and so we have some minor issues there ongoing, and be winterizing that feature and getting it ready for the official, official grand opening next year, even though it was well-received. Work is now generally complete at Veterans Park. I drove through yesterday, and literally, it was standing room only at the playground. I mean, it was the busiest I have ever seen. So, you know, we'll schedule a ribbon-cutting event in the next 30 to 40. And I'm not kidding, and I'm just telling the board, I mean, it, I think Mr. Taylor saw it, too. It's the most people I've ever seen. And we'll schedule a ribbon-cutting event in the next 30 to 45 days. You know, weather permitting, of course, on that. And there's one item on here, I want to, I want to do that last, so I'm going to jump around a little bit. Initial roundabout landscaping has been completed, looks very good. We'll continue to add some additional beautification to that. Mark's still working on the E V chargers. A lot of that has to do with ODOT's process, but I believe there's a light at the end of the tunnel forthcoming. They did green light combining the design and the construction, or whatever. And we've also received consultant responses for the systemic safety grant for ODOT, or ODOT, from ODOT for old 74 sidewalks. So, we'll be engaging that consultant soon. Regarding U T T V, we received very, very little feedback on that, so it looks like, you know, we're going to migrate to a digital-only platform with that, as that equipment, you know, either it's going to fail, or we'll just phase it out, and we'll probably look to mid 2026 to do that. Assuming it lasts that long. Service garage renovations are continuing. The process is a little bit slow, but it is measured progress, and Mr. Taylor's troops have done a great job moving materials and equipment over there. It's amazing how much stuff you can fit in a relatively small space when given decades to do so. So, there's been some paring downs, some, some other, you know, efforts in that to enhance the efficiency of that operation. We have two resolutions for the board to consider regarding false alarm, false alarm drops for both our police and fire. This is an inordinate drain on our resources, and we need people to get with the program and fix their alarm systems after three chances. And this will provide us with some financial penalties for people who fail to take the appropriate action within a calendar year. You know, thankfully, each department has developed a policy responsive to these so that we can effectively administer this if the board approves both of those. We're waiting on, we're still waiting to transfer the trail over the former high school site. I believe that is imminent. There's one overlay case tonight. I believe Mark will be very brief on that, as it is a continuation of a prior hearing. We have filed the OP W C funding application for the Elmont Drive project and the Baldwin-Binning Road landslide projects. Looks like we may be successful in our funding effort. However, I won't know until the scoring meeting at the end of, I believe, this week, where we stand, if we need to bump our funding contribution to be competitive. You know, obviously, we'll, we'll look to do that in partnership with the county on both of those. But I believe we're going to score very well. The county has pushed back the capital grant request process to the end of October. You have a resolution this evening authorizing an L W C F grant application. Since we have not been successful, and the county has chosen to allocate C D B G funds elsewhere other than Mount Carmel, where there is probably the largest population of Alamo people in the county, we are going to go after L W C F funding. It's a lesser grant match, but I think on our C D B G applications, we were in the 60/40 range, and with L W C F, we're capped at 50/50. So, this will give us sort of a beachhead to make some more improvements in the Mount Carmel area, if we're successful. We're still working through the Klepper Lane acquisition process with ODOT. We're kind of at their mercy. One other item tonight, you'll see a purchase order for around $100,000. This is to replace both playsets at the Mount Carmel Park. This is covered entirely through an insurance settlement that is a result of a storm damage event that occurred. The equipment was obsolete, manufacturer went out of business, new manufacturer refused to certify the parts, and so, we had the opportunity to take advantage of a dollar-for-dollar matching grant program with D W A, who did an outstanding job on the playground set at Veterans Park, to where we're able to replace both playsets at basically zero cost to the taxpayers here. So, that is, we were able to take lemons and turn it into lemonade, and I appreciate Mr. Taylor's support in that regard. We will continue to look to enhance our operations. We are conducting a comprehensive review of our cemetery fees. I know the board did that a couple of years ago. We can, we just continue to subsidize that to the detriment of the general fund, and that is an operation where I believe we need to be competitive with top-of-the-line peer cemeteries, Rest Haven, Spring Grove, and Gate of Heaven. I mean, those are the big three over here that I would consider us on par with. So, we'll continue to refine that and bring up our findings to the board at a later date for discussion. One other item I do want to talk about, or one other item. We had mentioned, you know, we have a license plate fee increase. We have the ability under O R C to bump the plate fees. We haven't done that. We continue to need to do that, and I will be bringing that forward to the board for two different hearings in December for that. And there are some specific notice requirements that we need to follow. Last item of business tonight, I want to talk about the wall. I know we've talked about it multiple times, but I believe this was a moving and honorable tribute to the, to our veterans, you know, both in the township, as well as the county, in the greater Cincinnati area, and veterans everywhere, and to their, to their sacrifice. I owe a special amount of thanks to Lisa R., who developed and managed and oversaw the aspects of the event planning. And I would like to thank the police department and fire department, specifically Chief Reese and Chief Clemmons, for their steadfast commitment, and the personnel, as well as the command staff, to ensuring that all aspects of the event were without issue, and really a first-class event in every regard. I also would be remiss if I did not extend my thanks to Matt Taylor and the hard-working men of the service department, because without them, there was no wall. And those guys did a phenomenal job preparing the grounds, positioning the park, dealing with the rentals and the equipment and the staging, and most importantly, assembling and tearing down the wall, and what the A V T T folks indicated was, I don't know if it was record time or not, but it was really fast, we put that together. So, without them, we were not able to make that possible. You know, every chance I get, I say that our staff here at Union Township are really beyond comparison. They're the best of the best, and I owe each and every one of them a debt of gratitude for their performance and participation in this outstanding and moving event, and we couldn't do it without them. So, for that, I say thank you. And thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Trustee Dills.
Mr. Wright, everything you just said, I completely agree with you on, in your entire report, and especially the wall. It's pretty neat that we're the only ones in the area that is doing it. It's so special. We're going to have two hearings in December. Just for clarity's sake, is this going to be business meetings, or are they actually going to be working sessions?
So, there'll be, the first hearing will occur at a business meeting as a, under the public hearing section on December 9th, and then the second meeting will be the following Monday, which I believe is the 15th.
Yeah.
And we have to have that hearing not less than three days, not more than 10 days consecutively. You have to have one and then the other. So, that is the process that we identify. And that'll be, one will be a regular business meeting, and one will be a notice and scheduled special meeting for that specific purpose.
As far as the cemetery, yeah, I think, I think it just, I mean, there's only so much land left over there. Eventually, it will run out. We've got years on it still, but any much. So, I'm in agreements with you that hate to do it, but we lose money. The township loses money in cemeteries. So, I, I, you know, I'm 100% in favor, mostly talking to the, to the board trustees and, and raising the prices. I do believe if you're a township resident, you should get a residential discount of some kind, compared to if you live outside the township. That's only fair. But the prices need to be raised up a little bit. They haven't been raising for quite a while. So, last question I have, just to cut through your curveball here, just a small one. I know your communication with ODOT. Do you have any update on the Glen S D with the Zwill Overpass? And will they get it done this quarter, or no?
So, so the answer to that is no. And Mr. Becker, he attends the T I D meetings where I go every month. And every month, ODOT told us they would be open this fall, this fall, this fall. Last, at last month's meeting, they indicated to us, oh, we're behind. We won't open until next year.
So...
There, I mean, and honestly, that is the most disappointing thing to hear. There's zero accountability. They do their own thing. They don't hold the contractors accountable, and it's very frustrating. It's frustrating for our residences and our businesses.
So, it's better if you do it than I do it, because I have a tendency to put my foot in my mouth. I do not like ODOT. I think they ran very poorly, and they've lied to us. They've had the most amazing, most beautiful weather for the past three months. I know this because I'm in the roofing business, and it sucks for me, but it's good for everybody else, right? And this is, they, they flat-out lied to us. There's a difference between a little bit of a delay, but we're talking almost a year. I remember back when Susan was, was our administrator, and they told us it was going to be first, second quarter of this year is going to get done. Now, now we're pushing fourth quarter in Christmas, it's still not done. So, probably better than you than me, but I do not like them, and I think they ran very poorly. And, yeah, that's all I have to say about that. But anyways, appreciate the update. It's all good. It's just frustrating that no one moves with a sense of urgency. You wonder why people hate government, because all the red tape and garbage. It's like these residents need that open. You promise the date, and not only are you a little bit behind, but you're like a year behind. You know?
It's no question. I drove through there this morning, two or three times, and I think I counted two people working.
Just frustrating, yeah.
It's, it's absolutely ridiculous.
First world problems, we're all going to be all right. It's just, holy cow, you're off by a year, you know? So, that's, that's, that's embarrassing.
I get it.
I'd rather you deliver that than me, because...
I will appropriately deliver that message.
You got it.
Yes, sir.
So, that's all I got, sir. Thank you.
Trustee Becker.
Yeah, so, in, in ODOT's defense, a little bit on that project, there is, because of all the dirt buildup on both sides to, to build that ramp, or build, you know, since the overpass, the, the approach to the overpass, it takes time for all that to settle, and I think they said it's like a, was it 90 days?
It's a 90-day settling period.
90-day settling period, and that's something they can't rush forward. Now, to get back to your point, well, yeah, but they knew about that 90 days, you know, for years now. I mean, that's not new information.
I would just say, these engineers make a lot of money. And if you gave me a date of first, second quarter of 2025, and you ain't going to get it done to 2026, you're a liar. You don't know what you're doing, and, and, and you clearly, you're outside your wheelhouse. So, don't tell me, you know, I, I get it, a month delay, there's bad weather, things happen, whatever. You know, material might be on back order, but a year? Sorry, not sorry. You should, they all should be embarrassed, and they should know that, hey, if this takes this long for the, for the land to settle and the settlements, they, they should have made that very crystal clear. But they fell short, and quite honestly, I call it poor management, and they clearly don't know what they're doing. So, I, I stand by what I just said, and I, I know every word I just said. So, I doubt they'll ever watch this meeting, but it is what it is. So, disappointing, and they should be embarrassed.
Your, your point is well-taken. Part of it was, had to do with weather, and then the weather created a delay of maybe, I don't know, a month, two months, whatever it was. Then you have the issue with asphalt plants get shut down for the winter. So, then it was simply too yet, too late to get the asphalt to finish it this year, which pushed it out to next year. That's my understanding of what happened.
Fair enough. I think government's the only...
They're not here to defend themselves. I thought they...
I think government's the only one to get away with this. If this was private sector, there ain't no way. I guarantee that they'd be fired. So, that's just my thoughts, but it's okay. No worries. I, I digress. We're not here to talk about ODOT. I just brought it up because it was on my mind, and I wanted to drive by it today and use it, and I couldn't. So, first world problems, well, it's all going to be okay.
Very appropriate comments, absolutely.
I'll have you and Mr. Wright deliver them at the T I D, not me, so...
All right, so shifting gears, I was going to, I was going to hold comments on, on the, you know, the traveling wall and the military tribute for board comments, but I'll just make them now. You know, Mr. Wright, he said it all. You know, it was all hands on deck, all departments here, everybody worked together, and everybody did a fabulous job. job. I mean, I don't know how anything could've gone any better, other than my speech, the tribute night, or the candlelight vigilante, but aside from that, everything was perfect or near-perfect, so. And I told Mr. Wright before coming to this meeting that he needs to buy Lisa R.'s steak dinner for all the hours she put into that, and she's really the rock star here when it came to that particular event. Other thing, I want to do a restaurant review, Hot Head Burritos down on Bennett Road, Bennett and 125, got carryout from there, and, and it, it won the Becker Seal Approval Award. This thing, this bowl, it was like this big, and it was heavy, I mean, it was heavy. I picked up the, so I, I use a mobile app most of the time, and I just, you know, bring home dinner. I picked this bag, I thought it was like dinner for three or four people, and I had the looks, I didn't, no, this is one bowl. It was really good, and I think, if you like hot food, that's the place to go, but I don't. So, you know, I'm actually using AI to look at, what is this? What is it? Because I, I don't like hot spicy food, so I was able to, you know, dial it back, that it was, it was good. So anyway, another restaurant. And, and, you know, earlier I made the comment, I can't get my wife to spend any money, you say I'm the cheapest guy you know. I got, I got another example for you on that. So these mobile apps, I bring home dinner, carryout typically twice a week.
You're delivering Uber Eats for people?
No, no. I'd never use them.
Be a wise way to get paid while you're going out there or something.
I just, I go, I usually get it on the way home from someplace, and.
I would love that.
Lot of times, you got this, you know, this BOGO deal, buy one, get one, so it is common. I'll bring home dinner for two for less than $10. Works for us.
You can make time.
You know, I, you know, we, Saturday nights, we typically go to Gold Star Chili in, in Mal Carmel. You know, I'm using their app, I get a free cheese coney every time I'm in there because of some survey I fill out, and, and, you know, dinner, dinner for two plus the tips, it still comes out to around 20 bucks, and I get, I leave a pretty decent tip, it's a whole, it's a whole lot more than 20% of the bottom line after all the discounts.
Proud of you, John.
So anyway, I, you know, living, living cheap's easy, I'm an expert at it.
Do you get the Inquirer, and you all pick out the coupons together on Sunday?
Do they still do coupons?
I, I don't think there's any coupons in the Inquirer. We get stuff that comes in the mail, and yes, I use those coupons.
I'm just giving you.
And, and, you know, Kroger, we, you know, every Wednesday, we look forward to the Kroger, the new Kroger ad that comes out, we go through, we clip the digital coupons, and I got the little app if I'm in the store and forgot to do that or something, oh yeah, I know how to, I know how to.
Crazy life at the Becker Residence House.
All right, that, that, Mr. Chairman, concludes my remarks.
Well, I mean, he's demonstrated to you the ultimate maneuver in which he is ecstatic at the thrill of the township being excited on playground improvements, and he gets to say that ye saved how many thousands of dollars by voting no on those playground improvements? 900,000? So it's a win-win for him.
It's like a million dollars.
It's a win-win for him. He gets it, he gets it all.
To replace perfectly good playground equipment?
He gets it all. Apparently, it was perfectly good, because as Mr. Wright has shared, the park was booming the other day, and that is a fresh return in this township. As far as taking care of and being stewards of the community assets, that's something that stood out to me. I think that's really a measure of good government for the people, and working for the people, the comment was made earlier today, you can see that. It's a little courageous sometimes to say you need to spend something in some locations, but what good is 60 acres of park if it's not being utilized, and no one's using it? And now you can already see and touch those tangible results here in the community, so that's great, thanks for sharing that, Mr. Wright. On the ODOT, I was lost in all the conversation on it, is there an actual date that they have said for an opening or no?
They, they continue to push back. When we talk to them at the TID meetings, the contract is through the end of next year, the end of next year, and I just find that absolutely appalling. And I will tell you, the biggest issue is, you know, in the state of Kentucky, they pay incentives.
Okay.
To get projects done early, and Ohio will not do that. They just, for whatever reason, they don't do it. I could be totally wrong.
Is that an executive branch issue, or is that a legislative branch issue?
It's probably, it starts with ODOT.
We should have some base contracting, so, okay, incentive-based, thank you. I will call tomorrow.
Maybe they do, I haven't looked at their contracts, but nobody in Ohio seems to want to make extra money to finish on time, which I find that incredibly hard to believe.
I believe there's a prioritization, I think, as I understand it, when the, the bridge project came through, and the bridge money came through, ODOT has, has prioritized resources that direction. I think Mr. Becker brings up great points on the settling of the earthwork. Mr. Dills, you're right about frustrations that anyone in the community can have for a 20-plus-long-year project, but I'm interested to see that there's an actual date, and that's great feedback on the incentive structure. I will personally call the chief operating officer of ODOT, and just see what type of information can, can get informed and shared on a date. I think it's important that we would have a date or a specific range. Mr. Becker, talking about steak dinners and restaurant reviews, is there Becker Seal of Approval for the best place to get a steak in Union Township?
Oh, boy. You know, I'm mostly an Arby's guy, but.
For your steak? For your steak?
I don't do, don't do steak dinners a whole lot, but I can tell you, Outback is good.
There we go.
Across the street, the Longhorn, that, that, that's another good place. Seems like there's a third one, who am I missing? Of course, there's a lot, a lot of restaurants that serve steak, but yeah, I'd certainly recommend those two places, yeah.
Outback, I, yep, I appreciate it. You didn't have something?
No.
Okay, all right, well, gentlemen, I believe that concludes the Township Administrator's report and ongoings from the trustees' perspective. Thank you, Mr. Wright. At this time, we've got a public hearing. This is gonna be reopening or the tabled Township Overly Case 319 Oscar from August 12, 2025. Mr. Wright, I want to make sure I get this right with where we're at, do we, we don't need to?
You would make a motion to.
Open the public hearing?
Reo, you would make a motion to reopen the public hearing, and then you would ask Mr. McCormick if he has any additional information.
Okay, all right, gentlemen, we have a motion to reopen the public hearing. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Public hearing is reopened at 7:14 PM.
Mr. McCormick, is there any new information present from what the applicant and opposition or, or, there's two proponents really that had the discussion?
Yes, so pages four and five of the staff report have been amended. There was an onsite meeting in August after the trustee meeting between the two owners, one for the property involved in this request and the neighboring property, along with staff and the representatives for the owner advancing this particular request. The applicant has provided, instead of a 15-foot buffer along the shared property line, now it's a 20-foot buffer, provided a letter dated October 7th, signed by both the subject property owner and the adjoining property owner to the southwest, Mr. Fraley, which states, "The trees of substantial character in the area discussed between the two properties appear to be out of the limits of disturbance and could remain post-development. If after land disturbance ingraining for the proposed development takes place, existing trees to remain post-construction are apparent. There are any gaps in natural screening greater than 10 feet in width, the owner and developer proposes to provide proposed landscaping consistent with the intent of the landscape plan, the essential package to supplement the natural screening between the two properties." So the base, in short, the trees that the neighbor was concerned about is not, are not gonna be impacted. Where there are gonna be gaps, there will be plantings that are consistent with what we've seen previous, into the previous metal. And the only other item that we had changed from last, the last meeting is that we have new architectural elevations, and we need the elevations to match the renderings I put on page five, but essentially, other than that, that's what's changed. And then I updated the, the plan materials, and I included the October 7th letter that was signed by the owner of the prospective property for development, and also the neighbor, Mr. Fraley.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCormick. So we reopen the public hearing. Do we need a, is there any additional applicant here tonight for it?
Yep.
Please come on up, swear in. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth, I hope you got?
Yes.
And please give your name and address for the record, please.
Michael Chandler, 602 Lila Avenue in Milford, Ohio. Thank you again for listening and entertaining our project. I want to thank Mark for his coordination and updated report. Happy to say through collaborating with the property owners, visiting the site, surveying the lines, setting the setbacks, observing the, the area disturbance in the trees in question, that we were able to come to an agreement that both parties are comfortable with. Nothing further to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
What was your, what was your name again?
Michael Chandler.
Mr. Chandler, and then I just want to say, Mr. Chandler, and then the, the Rupp family as well, thank you for doing what you did. It's a very good neighborly thing, you didn't have to do that, I appreciate that, and for me, you don't even have to waste your time, I'm gonna push this through, you get a yes vote for me. Thanks for doing what you did, it's very nice of you, that's what we want in Union Township, is just trying to coexist the best we can, so commend you both very much, so.
Thank you.
I'm a yes voter, I mean, I'm not gonna talk about it anymore, I got it.
Justy Becker.
Everything, Justy Dills, just ditto's. That's all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chandler.
Thank you.
Are there any proponents for this case? Are there any opponents for this case? All right, seeing none, gentlemen, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Public hearing is closed at 7:18 PM.
All right, gentlemen, we'll open this to the board for discussion, any further comments or discussion?
Got it.
Okay, I'll entertain, Mr. McCormick, do you need anything specific on the motion for the approval? It's all captured in your staff report page.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have the mo, the motion to approve as submitted in the staff report?
So moved.
Second.
No further discussion, roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, I appreciate the time working through it. Congratulations. All right, gentlemen, old business, seeing none, new business. The consent agenda, item Alpha consists of items one, approval of minutes, item, and that's Alpha, September 9th, 2025, regular meeting minutes. Item two, approval of payments prepared by Mr. Campbell. Item three, approval of monthly financial reports prepared by Mr. Campbell. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, item Alpha, one, two, and three?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item Bravo, motion agenda, gentlemen, do we have a motion to approve the purchase orders? I'll take the motion, and we can have them presented.
So moved.
Second.
Open for discussion. Mr. Campbell, do you want to, or I'm sorry, Mr. Wright, do you want to?
Sure.
Mr. Becker, do you want to see any of the purchase order items? Have Mr. Wright present?
No, I'm good, I'm good with the.
You're good with the purchase orders?
Everything as is, yes.
Oh. Normally, you like to.
Why don't you let them list them?
I'll just read them out, if that's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
We have the total quality logistics for their August economic development reimbursement in the amount of 47, 482, 45. Mobile comm for the access control upgrade, we discussed at the last meeting, in the amount of 165,000, that's phase one, and that gets us off and running. United States Postal Service for retail postage in the amount of $50,000. Deacon International for the Fire Department, annual software maintenance agreement, 22,500. Stryker Sales Corporation, this is our annual tech service on our cardiac treatment devices in the amount of 32,166,14. Stryker Sales Corporation, the annual tech service on our patient loading and moving equipment, that's your power cuts, other things like that, the amount of 40,999,20. Motorola Solutions for our CAD RMS, RMS upgrade for year one, that's 154,249, that's the, we discussed that at the last meeting as well. Critical infrastructure, Axon Enterprise moving into the Taser 7s, year three of that deployment, 46,993,58. Wex Bank for estimated fuel usage in the amount of $26,000. Bachmann's Inc. for the storage facility, mini-ton, three-ton mini-split systems, two of them, 37,667,7, excuse me, and Playcore Wisconsin, this is DWA, for the Mount Carmel Playground Equipment Replacement, 99,929,04. Happy to answer any questions.
I have none.
I'm good.
Okay. There's playground equipment on here.
I saw it.
All right, you're good.
It's free.
It's 99,000.
It's free.
All right, just wanna make sure we're good.
Insurance paid for at all, can't beat free. I'll vote for free every time.
All right.
I think I had to buy one, get one.
I didn't, wanted to deprive you of the opportunity to vote no on playground equipment, so just, that's all. All right.
Roll call.
No further discussion, roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Item C, Charlie, legislation agenda, gentlemen, we have a motion to approve Resolution 2025-58, resolution authorizing charges for false fire alarms pursuant to Higher Vice Code 505.391 to defray costs incurred in responding to false alarms.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Wright, what is the fees, what's, what's the?
The fee schedule for the Fire Department is after three, false alarms, and the fourth alarm, it's $300 for each subsequent alarm for the Fire Department.
All right. All right. No further discussion, roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item two, Resolution 2025-59, resolution authorizing fees for false alarms pursuant to Higher Vice Code, Section 505.511, to defray costs incurred in responding to false alarms. Do we have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I got a question.
Yes.
Well, first, Mr. Wright, explain how this one's different, then I'll ask my question.
So this one's slightly different because it involves the police, there's, there's a different statute that governs the police, and again, this is the three-strikes, right, principle, it's after three, it's not before you, it's after three, and this one ramps up for the fourth alarm, it's 50, for the fifth alarm, it's false, it's 100, and each one thereafter, after number five, is $150 per. And again, important point of clarification, both of these are January 1 to December 31. So we do have a reset, right, and it's in a calendar year, that's the way that works, and that's per the statute, so, but that's how this is, this is why this is different than the UTFD one, which is prescribed by a different statute section, and so it's just a little different, basically. The police, unfortunately, only get to charge half of what the Fire Department does. I think the thinking goes, the apparatus is more expensive to roll, you know, it's much bigger equipment, usually it's an ambulance and a, and a fire truck on a fire alarm, minimum, minimum two-unit call out on something like that, police car, again, one, two officers, two cars, little different time and material involved in that, so that's why there's some differences in that.
So my, my question is, so in both cases, what is the mechanism for collections?
So it's actually prescribed in the resolution. So, um, after this, uh, each department will determine, you know, they'll, they'll monitor this. And I imagine, you know, we'll do monthly CAD, uh, reviews. We have the ability out of our software systems to do monthly CAD reviews, to be able to tally those in each department. We'll maintain a database of false alarms that are registered. Both departments have also adopted policies on how to, you know, administer this. And there is also the ability to do, uh, appeals. You know, people can say, hey, you know, I had an electrical bug or power outage caused my system to do this or do that. It wasn't our fault or whatever. And there is a process for that review in that. So that's basically how that'll go. If it's determined, it goes to the fiscal office, fiscal office sends them a bill. They have, um, and it can go to the, the establishment, the occupant, the lesssee, agent, the tenant, the owner, um, and they have to pay the bill within thirty days. And if it's not paid, it's entered as an assessment on the tax duplicate, just like nuisances are. So.
Very good. All right. Thank you. That's all, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Item three, resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty, LWCF grant application authorization. Do we have that motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Comments from board members?
Trustee Dills, to brief the, uh, we've talked about the traveling memorial wall quite a bit. Uh, it was very moving. It was a great, great event. Uh, and I believe, I know we do it every ten years, but, um, Mr. Logue, I think you pushed this pretty hard thing last year to get this done, so just want to say thank you for that. And then the, the, the brains behind it, Ms. R, did a great job. Mr. Wright, good job. Uh, I had the honor of introducing, um, uh, Mr. Moppen, and he was our keynote speaker for Thursday evening. I had the honor of introducing him. So it was just a great event. Loved it. It was a good job. Last thing is, is the day after our last trustee meeting is when Charlie Kirk was assassinated. And, uh, I really like that guy and, uh, uh, everything he stood for. And I've, I've watched so much of his videos. Actually, I can't even really find out whenever he's been wrong, but I disagree with him. That's how, and he's so sharp. Uh, but today's actually his birthday as well. So, uh, just, um, uh, yeah, really just, just wanted to talk about that just for a minute and, and bring that up. But that's all I got, sir. That's it.
Thank you. Roll call.
Trustee Becker.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I was going to tell you that, uh, I have nothing more to add. But, uh, since, uh, trustee Dills mentioned, uh, Charlie Kirk, I, 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 I share the, those feelings. Uh, he wasn't on my radar at all. And, you know, when I heard the names, like, that name's familiar and, but, you know, I wasn't sure I could even place it, so, you know, quickly learned. And then I started finding YouTube videos. It's like, this guy is sharp. I'm like real impressed. I mean, he's quick on his feet and, you know, yeah, I wish I was that knowledgeable and, and, and quick with that. So, yeah, I just extraordinarily impressed with Charlie Kirk. And I'm glad I'm kind of seeing this revival nationwide with young people and getting involved in, uh, in, in church and, and politics. It's all great stuff. That's all, Chairman.
Thank you, trustee Becker. Um, yeah, you know, on, on that front, um, we're able to, to host a candlelight vigil, uh, shortly after the assassination in the village of Batavia. And really, it just organically kind of, um, we just wanted to honor and remember and, and come together as community. Uh, and just, that's why we've downtown the village of Batavia and the courthouse steps. Uh, but over six hundred people attended. I mean, it was just a matter of two, three days of, um, barely putting the information out, uh, again, just to provide people that were cir- searching or seek, seeking that an opportunity to come to get, gather a prayerful vigil. Um, you know, and Charlie, you know, he's someone that I know believe that the Bible, more than any other text, has shaped Western civilization and the ideas that we celebrate when it comes to human dignity, reason, science, compassion, uh, and that liberty comes from God. I mean, I think that's something that really promotes why democracies exist. Your authority, your rights don't come from government, they come from God. Uh, so I echo both of what you would say, uh, on that as well. Didn't really prepare to, to share much on that. Appreciate you sharing that about his birthday today and President Trump awarding the Presidential Medal of Freedom posthumously. And, um, I don't know, I wouldn't be opposed in that same vein to consider the small, there was a question earlier about jurisdictions working together or what types of authorities that we have, but I wouldn't be opposed to finding a way to, uh, have honor and remembrance in the township, uh, through something for Charlie Kirk, uh, in name. Could be a township road, could be an area of the park, could be something. I would think I would just leave that as open thoughts for people to consider at this point in time. But, but I do believe that it is a, a turning point, um, in the country and an embrace, uh, as, as you eloquently stated, trustee Becker, uh, as far as with the future direction maybe, um, and trustee Dills. So I'll just lay that out there. Um, you know, similar in nature that we're able to put in God, we trust is the national motto. Uh, I believe that there's other ways in which we can do naming conventions for different impactful, um, people on, on our Western civilization. So leave it at that. With that, uh, open, no other comments? So you, okay. Uh, we'll move forward with, uh, upcoming events. Mark your calendars and join us for the second annual sip and shop at the Union Township Civic Center on Saturday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, from twelve to four P. Union Township Zoning Commission meeting will be held on Wednesday, October twenty-second, twenty twenty-five at seven P. M. As a reminder, the twenty twenty-five general election will be held on Tuesday, November fourth, twenty twenty-five. The Civic Center will host several precincts again this year. Union Township Board of Zoning Appeals meeting will be held on Thursday, November sixth at seven P. M. Union Township offices will be closed on Tuesday, November eleventh, in observance of Veterans Day holiday. And the Union Township Board Trustees' next regular meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November eighteenth at six P. M. I do have one, go back to the board comments for, uh, you both adequately got me on the, on the focus there, Charlie Kirk. In regards to what you referenced, about a ten-year cycle turn for doing some type of veteran or military appreciation event. Trustee Dills, would you like to see some type of framework that would make that a little more frequent, a little bit more, uh, not, it doesn't have to be a decade event?
I'm actually going to, since all the brain power and hardware went to Ms. R, I'm actually going to defer to her and let her decide. If she thinks she can handle it and the workload, then, uh, if she says it's too much, then okay. But, uh, cause I think, I think a lot of work went into this, a lot. And so, um, if, if she can handle it and wants to do it and is excited about it, then sure. But if it's too much to do it every year or whatever, then I would say maybe a little less frequent. So, but I'll, I'll defer. It depends on the manpower and how much work it takes. But I, I loved it, so.
Less than a decade, though?
Yeah. And, and same thing with Mr. Wright. If he, if he thinks it's something manageable, but, um, Ms. R is the one who put all the work in. She's the one who did it all. So, well, uh, I just don't want to make her play any bigger. But if you think, I, I'll defer. So if you, if you didn't want to do it more frequently, okay.
Just said, it, it serves as a ways to connect with the, with the community.
Sure.
And the public, so.
Yeah.
You know, um, government working for the people, it's one of the impactful ways we can. But I just want to get a sentiment, if more frequent than every ten years is something that's appetizing to you?
Well, I concur with, uh, all of trustees, Dills', uh, comments. And it's not just Ms. R. Obviously, she was the point person on it, but, you know, it was like I said, all hands on deck. All departments put in a lot of time, a lot of effort and a lot of work. It's not something we're going to want to do annually, that's for sure. What the, what the right frequency is, I, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I did pull her aside and talk to her. She said whatever this board would be interested in doing, she is more than willing and happy to execute on, so. Uh, but with that, I want to make sure she's given the resources that, that are available. So I don't think a twenty-five thousand dollar type of budget every year needs to be done. It can be much lower, but something, um, and something that's on a man- manageable frequency. If it's biannually or, um, something to that extent, that's what, that's what I'm thinking. I know that when you go ten years, you basically have to start all over again. Um, so, yeah, because ten years, points of contact are completely different. Everything's just, just starting over versus, uh, refreshing. But happy to hear, uh, what the team wants to do and put together. I'll move us forward to executive session. Entertain motion enter into executive session pursuant to higher vice code, section one two, one point two-two golf as follows. Item one, to confer with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of a pending or imminent court action pursuant to higher vice code, section one two, one point two-two golf three. And two, preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment pursuant to higher vice code, section one two, one point two-two golf four. Do we have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
We're into executive session at seven thirty-six P. M.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate you very much.
Gentlemen, at this time, entertain motion to exit executive session with no action taken.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dills.
Yes.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Logue.
Yes.
We're out of executive session with no action taken at 8:27 PM.
Entertained motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dills.
Yes.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Logue.
Yes.
Were adjourned at 8:27 PM.